Yeah, we did it in five minutes.
Okay, okay.
Andy goes last.
Okay, he took eight. He took eight.
Ryan, that's the gap. We're gonna do capital interest. Everybody got their coffee? Ready, set, go.
You don't have it in there?
I'll pass it to you.
Okay.
Um, I have a couple of things. The MEAC tournament is coming back in March, and the police department and Marcus and Seven Vineyards did a great job. But I'd like for the manager to sign someone from the staff to start now, talking with the hotel and motel association, to make sure that we don't have any issues of guests being overcharged. At Hampton's Home coming this year, they had problems with the hotels charging more than they normally charge. And also at the CIA tournament, at one of the hotel lounges, they were charging the patrons twice as much. And if we lose the MEAC, then everybody loses. So we just need to make sure that when the tournament comes, that the patrons, you know, are treated fairly and are not gobbled. Couple of meetings ago, we got a grant for enforcement of traffic violations. And some of the greatest offenders of traffic violations are HRT buses, our city employees, especially our truck drivers, and school bus drivers, from what I see. And the trucks going to and from NIT are also heavy offenders. And I would just like to see the speed in Norfolk enforced dramatically, and to make Norfolk a safe place for vehicular and pedestrian safety. And so I hope we really, you know, use those funds to make sure that that is enforced. Also, recently, I've been getting a lot of calls from residents out in popular halls, which is probably a 75 percent retired neighborhood, about having driveways written up. I think it's supposed to be 20 feet, I don't know. I thought it was an issue that had to do with zoning, but it has to do with public works and drainage. And a lot of the residents out there have been getting, you know, getting written up. And so I would like, first of all, for us to stop writing the residents up, and that we bring it to the transportation and infrastructure committee to talk about driveways and standards, to see what we can do to give those residents relief. And I'm not gonna, I'm gonna hold up right there.
I just have one concern. Terry and I shared West Ghent when they closed the ramp for the tunnel, closes at 2:30. Came back, we talked about the Ghent Task Force, they came back and took the signs, no right turn on that gate, and up the streets in Ghent. We should keep the same time. It took us three years to get people to not wind through the neighborhood to try to beat the tunnel situation. And they took all, no right turn. Seems to me they should have left them with the same time from 2:30, because people accessing that on-ramp can't, after those times, couldn't go through there anyway. They may be, James here, are we getting those put back up?
John's teaching today, he is actually president of our force, so he's gonna let me know tomorrow.
Would you let me know before 6 o'clock, when I have to talk to the neighborhood?
Yes.
Seriously?
Okay. I mean, I'm not quite sure we were thinking too clearly when we.
But didn't we have to pass an ordinance to put them up?
Well, it was to ameliorate the changes with the tunnel right now. Short term, it's not that they were doing it forever, but right now, the neighbors are concerned, because old habits are being reestablished. And people are winding their way through the neighborhoods to beat the traffic.
That's all I have.
Two quick things. Promenade Point, when City Council promised to make sure there be no parking impact on Roland Park, the opposite has in fact happened. There's even a sign apparently in Promenade Park telling people overflow to go ahead and park on Roland Drive. Neighbors are having trouble even getting out of their driveways. So, you know, this was a promise we made to the neighborhood, they did not want that development for this reason. We did it anyway, and I think we need to look at a way to help them with it. I know permit parking could be an option, but you know, that really only is to the detriment of the neighbors. I mean, it's a hassle when you have to permit parking. But anyway, whatever we can do for that.
They're saying there's not enough parking at that?
See, apparently there's a sign within it that says overflow parking, so that might be guests or.
But they haven't even fully leased that place.
I just am telling you that.
It was a tight situation, but they also opened a gate down there that they said wasn't originally.
Right, I think that's more the issue, because I drive by it every day, and there's plenty of parking spots.
Well, they may be assigned parking spots, but these are for people that don't have assigned spots.
Our guests.
So that's one thing. The second one is, I mentioned back when JNA Racing came to us about the half marathon. We're getting pretty close to the new Midtown Tunnel being opened. I spoke to a representative with, what is it, ERC, the Elizabeth River Crossing, they're interested in having a footrace before the tunnel is open. This is something we did with Monitor and Merrimack. It's kind of a goodwill thing we could do between Portsmouth and Norfolk.
You mean run through the tunnel?
Yeah. And so you run through the tunnel for.
You can bike through the tunnel, let's do it.
Yeah, I mean, it's, well, I think it'd be a fun thing to do. And they're ready to figure out a route for a 5K. And I'd like to see if we could sponsor this, or help them with it. It'd be the week before, obviously, the tunnel official. Yeah.
No toll, major.
No toll. Actually, you'd have to wear a gold pass on your forehead, or whatever that is.
Mamie.
Princess Anne Road and Virginia Beach Boulevard. I really think that a study needs to be done for both of those areas. One, they're not pedestrian friendly. There are many accidents occurring on Virginia Beach Boulevard near the school, a three-car pileup just the other day, the speeding at 50 miles an hour. If I'm doing 35, and you're way ahead of me, they're doing at least 45 to 50 miles an hour. We don't have enough crosswalks there, and it's not pedestrian friendly on Princess Anne nor on Virginia Beach Boulevard. So I really would like to see what we could do as far as making it pedestrian friendly, especially with crosswalks in front of the Franklin Arms. The senior citizens are having a very difficult time once they get off the bus and trying to cross over to the other side.
What's the speed limit?
30. It starts 30. Once you cross over, Mr. Riddick, once you leave Ghent, the Ghent area leading up to church, it's 25. But once you cross over to that side, by Booker T. Washington High School, it switches over to 30. And it is a racetrack after that. There's no monitoring or anything going on.
So you think we need to reduce the speed?
Yes, yes, sir. But we also have to look at, yeah, making it pedestrian friendly down. Thanks.
I have a couple of things. I also have the popular hall thing as well. It appears, though, from the calls I received, that this driveway thing had not been an issue until the inspector for the area, the code inspector for the area changed. And the code inspector for the area is not respecting existing driveways, and is out there measuring driveways. And if they're half inch, or half foot, or whatever, over whatever the 20-foot guideline, these ticketing people that have had driveways there, you can't park on the grass, there's no sidewalk. And so people, over the years, have improved their driveway. And so now we have this new inspector who is ticketing folks, and it's not ever been, from what I've been hearing, it's not ever been an issue before.
And who has said that there's a new sheriff in town.
Right, and is not.
Very rude. And his name is Pierce.
Randy Pierce.
I'm not gonna call his name, but it's Pierce.
Randy Pierce. And very rude to the citizens, not making a good impression regarding, I mean, we go out of our way to make sure that we have a good relationship with, between the community and the city. And all the people who work for us need to understand that they represent the city. And if they can't do that, then maybe they should do something else. But that's the issue that I heard as well with the popular hall neighborhood from several people. And then also that people have been complaining about it, but apparently the complaints go into the black hole. So I don't know who they're complaining to, or who they're actually calling, but that the complaints go completely un, the calls go unreturned, the complaints don't get acknowledged, or anything like that. So that's another issue. Had someone, and this happened to me, but my husband said I couldn't say anything about it, but now that it's actually happened to somebody else, I can say something about it. Periodically, we go out and do water meter change outs, or something or another like that, and people's water is shut off for a period of time while the meter is exchanged or something. And they don't, according, I know I didn't get any notification, and the couple of folks that called me didn't get any notification from the city that this would happen. So maybe something like a door hanger, to put on citizens' doors the day before, to say, hey, we're gonna be out doing work, your water's gonna be off from 10 to 12, or whatever, because everybody doesn't work 8 to 5, so we can't presume that nobody's gonna be at home. And then at least people can plan for something like that, if they're not gonna be, I mean, if they are gonna be at home.
And vice versa, it's happening, not just to you, to other senior citizens, it's happening to senior citizens, where the water is completely turned off. And the senior citizen, she was in the cold without any heat. And our emergency people did not respond to her for three days. And it was, it was cold that this happened to her, so.
Yeah. So I mean, and I mean, like, if we're just doing, it's usually not a long period of time, but it's still a period of time if people aren't expecting to be without water, and they're at home, and they're not, they go to turn on the water and nothing happens. And so, you know, a door hanger or something to just say, hey, we're gonna be working, and your water's gonna be off for two hours between this time and that time. I think that's just convenient. And then the last thing came, and maybe this is just a general knowledge for procedure, someone was arrested for drunk driving, who had a passenger in the car. And the passenger, this is how it was presented to me, so I don't know what happened, but this is, this is what was presented to me. The passenger was not given the benefit of a ride home by the police, or the police didn't stay with the passenger until somebody came to pick up the passenger, who apparently was not drunk. The driver of the car was taken into custody, and the car was towed, but the passenger, who from what I was told, lived 12 blocks away, and was not taken home by the police or stayed, and it was like 1:30, 2 o'clock in the morning. So it was at night, and it was a female. So maybe, what is procedure with that, or whatever? I don't know, but maybe just kind of a two-minute, three-minute brief on what the actual procedure is, if there is a passenger in the car when someone is arrested, and the driver's drunk?
Well, not knowing all the details.
I'm just telling you what was told to me.
It's on Facebook.
Yeah. On Facebook.
Provide to me offline that someone, I'd be happy to talk to him, have someone talk to him or her, but if the female was intoxicated, she should have been arrested as well.
I don't think the passenger was intoxicated. I, from what I gather, it was just the driver that was intoxicated, and the passenger was not. That's what I gathered.
You know the age of the female?
But I can get you the, I can get you the complaint information.
I think the issue is, regardless, one, I do know that in other cases, Chief, that they, the non-intoxicated passenger, if he's given permissive use to drive the vehicle, can drive the vehicle away. That did not happen in this case. From what I heard, this vehicle ultimately got towed, which raises a whole nother issue as to why we have to tow it, to begin with. We don't have to deal with that. But I do understand this. So the real question comes down to, one, if the passenger was not intoxicated, why was the passenger, unless permissive use was given, if it was not given, if we assume that it was not given, and she could not drive the car away, because the driver who was intoxicated said, you can't drive it, there's no permissive use, and the car gets towed, the real question is, do we leave an individual, regardless of the age, and regardless of the sex, on the side of a road in the city of Norfolk in late hours to try to find a way home? I think that's the issue in this case.
Yeah.
I would not have known that.
Is that my right? That was what I gathered.
Yeah, that was the crux of the complaint.
Correct.
I wouldn't have known that, but not knowing all the information, someone would love it to get into specifics.
Okay.
But I would be happy to.
We'll show you the Facebook.
I'll screenshot the Facebook.
I have it.
You got it.
I can.
I would rather have real information.
Okay.
We can give you the car number, because they put it on Facebook.
Yeah, they put it on Facebook.
We'll look into it.
But you're probably seeing, you're getting one sign.
Oh, absolutely. And I referenced it, when this is the way that it was presented to me, I, you know, I wasn't there, but I'll, yeah.
That's the issue.
Okay.
This morning, we did our legislative breakfast with the school board, and Andy and Mamie and I were there, and Brian did a great job with a presentation from the city on that. Just wanted to point out, there was an interesting moment where we were talking about the comprehensive career and technical school, and there were actually legislative assistants that had no clue about it. Chris Dolly's legislative assistant, it was like this is the first they had heard of this, and I'm thinking, and correct me if I'm wrong, anybody can, I think council's kind of said that we want to move in that direction of that school.
A million dollars.
Right. So if we are kind of making this a priority, even if it's five years out, maybe we need to do a little bit more marketing now on this, not knowing where all the funding sources are, but maybe we should start talking about it more with the community, and getting them set up for what could potentially be here. I think our citizens need to know that it is one of our priorities, and I think the earlier we get it out and start discussing it, it will be helpful if we end up having to do some major donating or funding sources for that. But I just thought it was interesting that at the table, that there are people who didn't know about it. Some were well-versed in it and can speak about it, but you know, with the Go initiative, it would only help us to talk about it some more.
That's it. And Paul, thanks for coming back. Chief, and I go back to Norfolk PD. Mr. Riddick and I have dealt with issues of police chases. There was a police chase that recently began in Chesapeake, ended up in, I think went through Virginia Beach, ended up in Norfolk. And there was two vehicles, civilian vehicles were in the accident, didn't involve Norfolk PD, but you may be familiar with it, we saw it on TV. What bothers me the most is, is I understand that the highest level of infraction on the driver of the vehicle that had left Chesapeake and entered Norfolk was, I believe, driving on a suspended or revoked pursuant to the fact that he had had a previous DUI. So there weren't, it did not appear they were chasing a felon. That's what we gleaned from the news. That does not appear to be our policy in the city of Norfolk, and the violent collision that resulted was horrendous. We also know that, according to what the news report was that evening, was that one of the bystanders, or one of the witnesses had said, that the car came past me so fast that it rocked my own vehicle, meaning the wind, as it passed. If you could, I'd like a briefing on what occurred, because if other cities are in hot pursuit of somebody who has, at most, had, we're in hot pursuit into the city of Norfolk, and it's driving on suspended or revoked because you had a previous DUI and could not drive, and we're forcing them to such speeds, it's not worth it to what happened in that case. It'd be different if we were coming out, again, different if it wasn't a felon, but if you could, could you look into that issue? These are just the facts that we gleaned from the media. And then let us know what the truth may be, and then what our policy still is and remains.
Absolutely. Can I say one thing regarding that?
Sure, please.
Clarity, NPD was not involved in that pursuit.
Well, then what is our, I don't want to get into the issues, but shouldn't our policy be to explain to Chesapeake what they're doing in our city? And then ultimately, I mean, they did chase for quite a ways into the city of Norfolk.
It was supposed to come here for one mile.
Well, let me look at.
Well, under hot pursuit, we can go further.
Candy?
We were not directly involved in the pursuit.
Okay. But we need to be able to call them off, if that's the case. If they're not chasing a felon, we're dealing with horrific consequences in our city, and what, not only to our citizens' property, but to the city's property. So if you could, and again, I'm not putting you on the spot, it's really to prepare you for later, that we can meet at a meeting in the future, and prepare us with a briefing as to, one, and, because the borders are very tight, I've had clients, frankly, who have been involved in pursuits that have fled, but they were, they were felons ultimately. And even then, it involved accidents. And the question would be whether Portsmouth should have chased that person into the city of Norfolk, without calling Norfolk PD ahead, and setting up, it was easy, this was a fairly lengthy, and I don't want to debate it now, we can do it another time, but, not even a debate, but a discussion. I mean, there could have been strips laid out, anything that could have stopped this had there been coordination with Chesapeake. But we need to work to make sure we have our policies correct. I'd like to know what policies would be with other cities, because it does become a danger if it's not worth it. So if we could, let's put that on your calendar, we can talk about it into the future, especially Christmas holidays coming up, people drunk driving, people driving, we need to know where we are. I'd appreciate it.
David, how do they know what this person, whether he's a felon or not?
I think they were stalking him for a traffic infraction, and then he took off, and then ultimately, they found out after, and again, I'm relying on a media report, after they found out that the individual was really, he didn't stop because he couldn't be driving because his license had been suspended or revoked pursuant to a previous DUI. So that means.
He had a license check, and then he.
No, that was after, after the accident. I think he had committed a traffic infraction before, but again, I would prefer that we get the whole story.
Right, I understand what you're saying, I don't know how you would know.
Yeah, my question to Bernard, sovereign immunity, does that stretch, you know, over, is there any exposure to what happened to the people in our city? Or is Chesapeake covered by sovereign immunity as well?
They wouldn't lose the immunity just because of the change in the borders.
Right.
And it would be their responsibility, their risk, not ours. But the application of it would not change as a result of crossing the border.
Okay, we're gonna go to the, Chief Wise, you have some comments you're gonna make about the priorities grant?
There's an ordinance item.
We can probably address that at the podium, if you want upstairs, Mayor.
If there are any questions about that, we can bring the bike. Where's Susan? Susan, how long is your presentation? I don't want to shortchange it. We can bring it back if you can. Really, is that long enough?
Yeah. It's on jurisdiction.
It's on the docket tonight.
Okay, all right. Let's do it.
I don't know what it is.
Under hot pursuit. That's a lot of writing.
I'm gonna put some here, we all get a couple.
The election, they won't take that long.
I mean, they're not even on my docket.
Yeah, the precinct change?
Yeah, they're sorry.
Okay, hold on just one second. Just do the bike.
Thanks.
Okay, you got five minutes.
Okay, all right. So last summer, I was here to present to you the fact that we were working on a bike plan. I am here tonight to present that bike plan. Just to give you some background, about a year and a half ago, we hired Tool Design Group to work with us on the bike plan. We held three public meetings, we had one at Park Place, one at Tarrleton, and one in Southside at the Aquatic Center. So we got some really good public input then. We also had the online interactive map, known as WikiMap, we had a ton of people go on there, provide public input. And then we also spent some additional time with Tool in the field. The result is the Norfolk Bicycle and Pedestrian Strategic Plan. So again, just a reminder, this is not a master plan, this is not a plan that shows everywhere in the city where we would want a bike facility. It is a core set of 12 strategic corridors. Just to give you a brief layout of what the plan is, chapter one is an introduction, chapter two is how the plan was developed, it goes over the public meetings that we had, and the WikiMap. Chapter three are some implementation suggestions, so some funding sources, and then some suggestions on how you might want to do a pilot program to introduce some of the corridors. Chapter four, that's really the meat of the plan, this details all 12 of the corridors. These are the 12 corridors. As you can see, they are throughout the city, they are connected to each other, to existing facilities, as well as to points of interest within the city. The different bike facilities, so in the bike plan, you will see, in each of the quarters, several different types of bike facilities. So I wanted to quickly go over the different types of facilities, so when we say a separated or a shallow, you'll know what we're talking about. So we have a shared use path. That would be like the Elizabeth River, it's completely separated from traffic. We've got a separated bike lane, so that is, as you see, a bike lane, and then it is separated from traffic by a, generally, it's a three-foot area, which is hashed, and there is some sort of hard improvement. Usually, you're gonna see some sort of bollard, a flexi-bollard. It can be curbs or something else, but usually, it's the flexi-bollards. There is a straightforward bike lane, so you've got the bike markings on the pavement, and then a fairly deep line that goes along the bike lane, so that's the protection there. You've got a buffered bike lane, kind of like a separated bike lane, but with a buffered bike lane, there's generally no bollards. It's just the three-foot wide area that is generally marked with paint.
There's no what?
There's no bollards. On the, so on the separated, there would be bollards, the flexi-bollards. And so on the buffered, there is that protective three-foot area, but there's no actual hard improvement, there's just the three-foot area. You've got the share lane markings, so that's the sharrows, as we all know. Then you have the priority share lane markings, so that's basically a shallow that is either highlighted with green paint in the background, or sometimes it'll have a dashed white, or two white lines on either side. So that's a priority shared lane.
So, Ms. Susan, are these the ones we're considering?
You will see most of what I've gone through in our bike lane, yes, on our corridors.
Okay.
So sometimes, you can't do a corridor with the whole bike lane.
Okay. Contra-flow bike lane, we actually have one of these now, all the way on the northern portion of Llewellyn. So this is where, and this is actually a really good graphic, because it's what ours looks like, and that's the graphic on the top. So Llewellyn, on that portion of, the northern portion, heads south, it's a one-way heading south. You then have the yellow double lines, and then you've got a bike lane going the opposite way, hence the contra-flow. So you've got a bike lane going the opposite direction as the traffic. And then you've got a paved shoulder, so it's, there's no bike markings there, it's just, you've got the street, and then it's just an extra wide shoulder with no bike markings. So again, these are all of the different types of facilities that you will see in the corridors. So what I wanted to do is, each of the 12 corridors is pretty consistent, there's like a template that is used, so they're fairly consistent and easy to read. So I wanted to go over kind of what the template is. So on the first page, you'll see a map, and it'll show citywide kind of where the corridor is. It gives you details about the corridor, the purpose of the improvements, the cost of the entire corridor, and some challenges. Generally, the second page, so here's where you see it. This is the, an up-close view of the corridor, and you can see it's color-coded, this is the type of facility that is proposed for each segment of the corridor. Again, now we've just got some photos of the different segments within the corridor. Here's one thing I did want to point out, so as part of these corridors, one of the things you're gonna see is some lane diets and street, road diets. Lane diet is when you narrow a lane to provide some room for a bike lane. A road diet is when you eliminate a travel lane to provide space for a bike lane. The very bottom portion of that cross-section, you'll see what the road looks like today, the colored bar is what the road will look like after the modifications to the street. The colored bar is what the road will look like after the modifications to the street. Just to let you know, in November, the Bike Commission did pass a resolution approving the bike plan. And that'd be forwarded to you all on November 12th. The Planning Commission recommended approval. This will be on your December 8th public hearing.
Can you, as I read this, and I apologize, I'm trying to understand how this is worded. And as I go through it, I mean, this is really terrific stuff. And so I went to the one area that struck me, Interstate 64, 564 interchange. That's where it's cornered. And as I look at it, I read segment two, as it's, you say quarter three, segment two, page 56. And then I go down to potential design challenges. But I, and then I go to the next page. Where do I see solutions? Is the next page the solution?
Yes.
Okay. Because it doesn't, it doesn't, I'm looking for the word solution and all I see are challenges. And it doesn't say solutions. Then I go to the next page, and again, where do I see solution? Would solution be, when you say challenges, that you're telling me that's the solution?
That's, so the proposed segment of that corridor is how we're addressing, how we can best address the issues, the challenge.
So, so the challenges is really how to best address, and that's the solution. Because as I read it, it says, it does give, this will be a problem, this should be, this should, but it does say, this is the recommendation. And I apologize, and this is terrific work, but I just, I didn't know how to read it. And so it makes sense. Thank you, because it's really well done. Very well done.
Susan, I don't know what news station it was, but I started getting a lot of emails from people saying, why is the city gonna spend $17 million on bike paths? I don't, I don't, I know, and I-
Goes to our close session.
Right. I explained to them that we're not spending $17 million, but it's a master plan. Is that what the final cost is?
DJ plan, yes.
Yeah, sure, okay. So it's just the final cost?
So yeah, if you add up, so as I pointed out, each quarter has cost. If you add all of that up, that's what it is. But again, this is a five to 10-year.
Sure.
It's not at once.
That's what I told them.
And we'll also be applying for grants.
Would you agree it really goes to what we've discussed earlier today? It's the draw?
The type of path will match up with the corridor itself.
Problem is when you start rolling all these numbers in a 10-year plan, all of a sudden, it just, it looks enormous. You can bite, you can take it off in small bites.
Exactly.
Well, and I think there's a lot of more. Yeah, a lot of things.
Okay, Susan, thank you.
Well, done. Thank you.
I would just like to add one thing to this. First, I was just in New York City, one of our oldest cities. Every street I was on had a bike lane. Every street. And I think that was totally lane dieting. Because, you know, they still had the lanes, traffic was still going, and there was a, anyway. One of the things that I, as a biker, hear all the time complaints is bikers are terrible. They're rude. They don't follow the directions. We have to stop at signs. Bikers don't stop at signs. And, and that's true in many cases. What are we doing for teaching our citizens, both bikers and drivers in cars, to do this correctly?
Yeah. So we, and I had talked about with Ron the other day about this. I think we need an education component. So I'm pulling together a group of people to come up with ideas on who we have to educate. Because you talk about cyclists, there are serious cyclists, there are commuter cyclists, there are educational cyclists. But each of them will need to know how they're supposed to use these bike paths. And, and the serious cyclists need to be told, look, Norfolk is getting serious about this. You guys need to, and I know, I've been on rides where they roll through red lights, and I won't do that ride anymore. So they need to be reminded that if you're gonna ride on the road, you better follow the rules of the road.
Last year, we did initiate the We Roll Together campaign. And we have more work to do.
Yeah, a lot more. And I would hope you're getting TBA involved in this.
Yes, they are.
And, you know, obviously, I'm gonna speak also for the helmets. And I would love to see us apply for more grants to try to make this easier for people wearing helmets. It's really helpful to get everybody working together.
Okay.
It was great, though.
The polling precinct change, polling place, Stephanie, you wanna?
Hi, I'll be very brief because I know you have another meeting to get to. And our vice chair, Barbara Clare, is here. I just wanted to introduce her.
Glad we know her.
Our proposal, our proposal is to move from the current Ocean View Senior Center into the Ocean View Golf Course. The senior center is being raised. It's been sold to a developer, and we need somewhere to vote in the elections next year. It's conveniently located directly behind the current senior center. This will be for all elections beginning in 2016. This shows the current number of registered voters, active voters, and ballots cast in 2012. We've reviewed this with all four civic leagues involved in Ocean View Center precinct, as well as the Golf Management Company, the director, and assistant director of general services in the golf pro that manages the area. And they're all excited about the move into the golf center. So here's pictures of the golf course. And what we're proposing is to move into Uncle Pete's Pavilion directly behind the golf center and use that as a polling place. It is ADA compliant and accessible. And we're excited about doing this as a picture of the interior of the pavilion where voting would take place. Notification is required for public hearing and council vote at a formal session. We're hoping to be slated on your agenda for next month. We'll work with the city attorney's office to draw up the ordinance.
This would be ready for the May election?
March 1st, presidential primary.
Is it permanent, is it permanent location?
Yes, as far as we know.
And what's the new name of the precinct?
It will remain Ocean View Center Precinct because it's going from the senior center to a golf center. So we don't want to change the name of the precinct.
Not senior center. Senior's been taken out of it.
The precinct is called Ocean View Center.
Yeah, I know that.
All right, let's do it. Okay.
Okay.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.